And it is 6:00 PM, President Ziegler.
Okay, uh, thank you everyone for coming. I'd like to, uh, call the, uh, continuation of the board meeting to order. I believe we need to take a roll call vote because we're meeting, uh, remotely due to an abundance, an abundance of caution over COVID. Um, Terry, can you, uh, take attendance for us?
Um, Manager Crafton.
Here, present.
Manager Duval?
Present.
Manager Cook?
Present.
Manager Pedersen?
You're muted.
I saw her mouth go present. It's a lot mute.
Unmute.
There you go. Manager Pedersen?
Here.
And President Ziegler?
Present.
All managers are present.
Okay, so we had just come out of closed session and I believe we're going to continue with the agenda and then come back to closed session, um, when we have, uh, a guest speaker coming back on with us. So.
That is correct. Now, um, President Ziegler, managers, Mr. Pressman has a 6:00 PM obligation but felt that he would be here, no later than 7:00 PM and perhaps even before, and Mr. Selkey will also be joining us.
So I believe the next item on the agenda was to authorize change order number two for conservation solutions. Is that correct?
That is correct. President Ziegler?
Yes.
Yeah, so, uh, um, Mr. Pressman, when he first approached the Bonaide thought overall scope may approach, uh, $30,000. Um, the managers initially wanted to just give him a scope to get going, so they authorized $10,000 um, with him to note the 50% and 75% milestone. They did the same thing with a subsequent, uh, $10,000 increase. Um, and now he is requesting one last increase, $10,000, which he believes is enough to uh, get through the remainder of the process, including any, um, conservation easement discussions that would be need. The agreement was included in the packet. There's no subsequent changes to the agreement, a little bit um, authorizing additional expenditure of up to another $10,000, bringing the total contract to $30,000. And again, he will, uh, inform me when he reaches 50% and 75% of that additional.
President, President Ziegler?
Yes, Manager Crafton.
Yes, I'd like to move adoption of Resolution 23-058 to authorize change order number two for conservation solutions.
Can you repeat that, trainer? The, is that on the screen? I can't, uh, the number's not on my notes.
23-058.
That was what.
Motion by Manager Crafton and a second by Manager Duval. Do we have any questions or comments before we vote on this?
Yes, Mr. President?
Manager Cook?
Um, when I'm, I'm, I'm wondering, I think I raised the question with Mr. Jeffrey about adding the resolution. I wasn't aware that a resolution was added and I'm wondering what is our procedure for notifying people of changes to the agenda of the documentation?
This resolution was included in the packet.
Well, it was not included in the packet when I copied it right from the website. So, uh, that needs to be addressed in that regard.
President Ziegler?
Manager Crafton?
You might, uh, I'm not finished yet. I have a yield request.
Sorry.
Manager Cook?
But I, I do want to thank Administrator Jeffrey Brown for going and preparing resolutions that I've stated many times. We could move things forward if we have resolutions for proposed actions on each one of our high action items. So thank you. Now I yield back.
Manager Crafton?
Uh, well, I printed it up when we had our other meeting. It was, it was there and there was an error.
President Ziegler, um, Manager Crafton, I, um, at, when it was very first posted, uh, Manager Cook wrote to me asking for that resolution over that weekend. So that Friday that it was posted, it was not up there Saturday, Sunday. It went up on Monday. So anybody who looked at it, you know, on Monday saw it, but anybody who looked at it Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So that's what Manager Cook is referring to.
Mr. President?
Manager Cook?
Yeah, this is my last comment. Um, and I made this comment before. I think if we, after the initial posting, if there are changes, particularly us managers, but all the staff, everybody should be notified and something should be put on the website, you know, to indicate that there's been a change. If people go at it and look at it, I don't think we should expect them to go back to it every single minute before a meeting and expect to, uh, you know, to check out what has or has not been changed. So I hope that Administrator Jeffrey will take that in mind and that the Governance Committee would look at that as part of the Governance Manual and its straight administrative, uh, uh, and I'll re-pray for making a slight comment of, uh, so I yield back. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there any other questions or comments on the motion? Um, 23-058 before we vote? Mr. Smith, can we have a roll call vote on, uh, the, uh, motion at hand, the 23-058?
Uh, yes, Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
If I get a vote, vote no.
Andrew Pedersen?
She's muted.
Yes.
President Ziegler?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one.
Okay, I show the next item on the agenda as being the, uh, Minnesota Watersheds Resolutions. That's a discussion item. Uh, Administrator Jeffrey, is that correct?
Yeah, President Ziegler, managers, um, within your packet, you should have found a cover memo as well as a memorandum from Minnesota Watersheds and three, uh, separate resolutions. All of these resolutions are still active, um, within the Minnesota watershed packet. There has been changes made to Resolution 22-06, which is the, um, Resolution to Limit Weightboat Activities. Um, what was added were additional citations for studies that were used as well as information from both the state of New Hampshire or Vermont, one of those two little states, um, who is looking to, uh, put in new, who their Citizen Committee Committee for Legislature is looking at a new rule change right now, as well as Michigan, that uh, their DNR has, uh, put forward a new rule. Um, Manager Duval had asked me, given the, um, given the aversion that many of the outstate, um, watershed districts and organizations had about the flexibility and open meeting law, um, his, their concern was always that they do not have the resources to do that. My understanding in, in speaking with, um, Council Welch, who helped draft this as well as, um, reading it myself, there is nothing within this that compels anyone to do that. Uh, if they want to continue to meet in person, all of their managers in public, they certainly can, even as this resolution is written. Um, the soil health, I know Manager Crafton would like to, we talked last year a little bit and we never circled back. I do know that she has some additional language she would like to see added to that. Uh, I will leave it to the manager's discretion if they would like me to work with Manager Crafton to incorporate that language or to leave as is. I have spoken with Jan Voight, uh, and if we can get it to her by October 1st, she will be fine with, um, getting it in and getting it in the process.
Okay, are there any, uh, new, uh, resolutions that anybody had that they wanted to get added?
That, that, President Ziegler?
Yes.
Manager Cook had requested, and I would like to put it to the board, um, that we put forward a resolution, uh, requesting that the state um, provide funds for, for conservation acquisition, uh, properties. Manager Cook, I hope I didn't misstate that or put words in your mouth that were, were what you had asked for.
Mr. President?
Manager Cook?
Uh, yes, uh, we'll, we'll have a discussion, uh, taking it more depth later on, but, uh, just as other watershed districts have proposed resolutions, uh, to Minnesota, I guess watersheds, to fund certain, uh, activities, et cetera. I think we should add a resolution, uh, for Minnesota watersheds to support the funding of the acquisition um, of the properties that we're going to be discussing today. It's a, you know, I, as I said before, uh, I don't think our taxpayers should be bearing the burden of the proposal and that, um, we should, uh, if we want to do an acquisition, we should be seeking, uh, funding uh, from the Minnesota Legislature, via, via Crown Legacy Funds or any other source, uh, that we state or DNR, et cetera, at their disposal.
So it seems like there's an opportunity, I know it's a discussion item, but an opportunity for resolution to revise one of the, uh, resolution proposals for Minnesota watershed and to add a second one. Um, do we have a motion to that effect? Or any other motions?
Also move, Mr. President.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Is there any other questions or comments?
President Ziegler?
Manager Crafton?
So is this specific to us getting money? Or is this for more general for, for that funds be available to help? LGs buy money or buy property?
Manager Cook?
My, my view is, uh, we are, I'm, I'm sorry, can you hear me now? I, I don't want to talk over people here. I think I was doing that. Sorry. I'll continue. Yeah, uh, the intention here is to specifically fund the acquisition of the properties that we are discussing. Um, you know, most, most secrets right in our minutes that we're discussing, three parcels and acquiring them and uh, the resolution should say, the, for the, uh, state and state agencies to fund the entire amount of the acquisition of those properties uh, should district enter into an agreement to acquire those properties.
President Ziegler?
Manager Crafton?
I have a question for, um, Council Smith. Is there precedent for something like this? Do you know? He's muted.
I apologize, I couldn't find the button. So, uh, I, I would say that, uh, from time to time, in my experience, I have seen, um, watershed districts from the Red River Valley bring forward, uh, resolutions supporting uh, flood damage reduction, uh, funding for, um, projects generally, but specifically noting their need, you know, for that funding. Um, occasionally, I think there are resolutions where an individual watershed district wants the support of the association for a, a, a local watershed district project and, um, so I, I think I would say it's not unprecedented.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions or comments on the? Manager Duval?
So, and it, it seems that the the basis for the question is to defer um, our question, um, whether or not we move forward. So I, I don't disagree that it would be maybe something to do with the future, but it feels like this is a deferring of the decision. My opinion.
Mr. President?
Manager Cook?
Uh, I'm, I'm not sure where Manager Duval gets his feelings, uh, from, uh, point answers for maybe better put for Minnesota watershed to support the state funding of the acquisition of the three parcels and you know, assuming that the, you know, an agreement is reached to acquire those parcels.
Thank you. Uh, is there any other questions, comments, clarifications?
Mr. President?
Mr. Smith?
Um, I believe the draft resolution is the last page of the materials on the resolutions. And as it was drafted for the packet, it, the resolved paragraph, the first one, um, asks Minnesota Watersheds to support a legislative appropriation to Bowser for Grant Annapin County and its, and its conservation partners for the partial funding of a conservation easement uh, for this project. And I believe from the discussion, Manager Cook was suggesting it be for the full funding. So I just want to flag that issue for your attention before you act on the resolution. And then the second resolving clause adds support for additional appropriations or similar undertakings by other watershed districts.
Mr. President, so could we, uh, Administrator blow up that document? Not, not literally, but in margin. As much as you can, remain more larger. And where was the part you were referring to, Mr. Smith, regarding funding?
So, in the now therefore be it resolved, first, that paragraph that's highlighted, the third line says to support, it's supporting partial funding of a conservation easement.
I think, I, I would suggest that it, it read that, that the support, uh, to support the funding of all or part of the, uh, acquisition of Spring Road Conservation Project. I, I, I don't know if conservation easement is the right way, but why tire hands to limit this uh, on that basis. So my view would be that it would support, basically support the acquisition, uh, of the springboard, uh, Spring Road Conservation Project. But so, full or partial, I don't see any reason that it asked for part of it. I don't see a reason to limit this. So, uh, I don't know if you have that in the word to Mr. Jeffrey, could you try to make the changes I I was speaking of?
Uh, it is a PDF document. I could put a note in there.
There, wherever you want a note on the side there. Right, right. In the now, now therefore be it resolved, hereby support legislative appropriation. I wouldn't say it to Bowser or other entities for legislative appropriation to Bowser or other entities for the purpose of, I'm sorry, I'll wait for you. It's always so much harder in PDF.
The purpose of?
Uh, purpose of acquiring uh, the Spring Road Conservation Project. Uh, and I was thinking, uh, whether, whether through a conservation easement or otherwise. Right now, I have no idea what the legislature can do, um. Can you make your note a little larger? Please, I'm sorry.
Uh, I don't know if I can or not. Uh, no. Uh, or other entities for the purpose of acquiring the Spring Road Conservation Project via easement or fee title? Does that capture what you're?
Fee title would be, would, would be fine. I don't know if that put anybody off. I don't know if anybody has that, any opinion whether we're saying about, I was just saying, saying to counter each, eat conservation easement or otherwise.
President Ziegler?
Manager Crafton?
So I think I would prefer the original la, um, language in this, um, basically because um, Bowser is supporting things where we have lots of partners. Um, and it's not like it's a a threat, um, like a, like a flooding easements or floodplain that you're trying to buy to support to, to, to prevent. So I think in this spirit of how Bowser operates and the emphasis on partnerships, the original language would probably, and then of course, then the last one, you know, to support other watershed districts and local units of government. Um, I just think that lends itself better to what the state has been doing.
President Ziegler?
Andrew Pedersen?
I would agree with Manager Crafton. I think, um, the fact that it does say, please support all of the watersheds when they're looking for this sort of thing is absolutely necess, uh, necessity because you, you have to imagine there are a lot of watershed districts out there trying to do things. And if they got one of these for every project, uh, I, I just don't know how Minnesota watersheds would see that. So I think as long as it's in support of all. And I would also agree with Manager Crafton. The only ones I've ever seen in the six years I've been involved have only been for the Red River Project, and I think it's because of flood mitigation. And where our scenario is different than that. So again, I, I agree with Manager Crafton.
Mr. President?
Manager Cook?
I have no idea why the other managers want to tire hands for doing that. Bowser isn't to be all an end all. Uh, you know, in, in this regard, so why are we limiting ourselves? I don't recall any of the flood mitigation of the projects, you know, where Minnesota Watershed supported it at any reference to Bowser or anything else like that. So, um, I, I don't think it's adding anything, um, by adding Bowser and only detracts or limits, uh, the appeal uh, that we're doing that. So I, I think we should be going with the language as I modified as I proposed.
Okay, um, so maybe it would, uh, make sense to separate the two, um, resolutions. So we have the, the land, one, the, uh, hap, one, and the, uh, purchase of the property separately. Um, and if we do that, uh, then we can continue discussion on this one. Um, so to, uh, Mr. Smith, is there a way we can back out of this? I guess I make a proposal to break the two, uh, resolutions into separate and, uh, see if I get a second for that. Is that right?
Mr. President, I would say yes. And we began with a motion by Manager Cook, seconded by you to add soil, that language to the soil health resolution, as Mr. Jeffrey had outlined, and to adopt the proposed language about the, uh, this resolution about the conservation acquisition. And then Manager Cook proposed revisions to that resolution. Um, and we got into discussion about it without formal motion. But if you wish to separate, I would say then a motion to amend by, um, taking, you know, deleting the conservation resolution from the main motion, just taking up the soil health language, dealing with that, and then a, a new language, a new motion to deal with this matter.
Mr. President? I'm, I'm, I'm confused. What, what, what is the soil health? Thing? What are we? What, what is that? Why are we talking about soil health? I thought we were talking about the acquisition of, of in some way, shape or form, rights with respect to the Spring Road Conservation Project.
So the.
Maybe I fell asleep and I didn't know it.
The original motion had included both, but, um, you know, it's clear we're, uh, not talking about the soil health, but that was part of the motion. So separating the two maybe helps us get to a uh, conclusion on at least one of them and gets us a little more time to think about the other one.
So, Mr. President, could somebody summarize what, what is the soil health one? I, I thought we had it. I thought it had been adopted. Are thinking of changing some language now? I apologize. I'm just confused exactly what, what we would be voting on.
So Manager Crafton, can you explain?
Well, I'm confused too. You're not alone. Um, I thought that I was gonna work with the administrator to, to see about what we were gonna include. Um, unless that language has already been dropped in.
It is not.
Okay, yeah. So I didn't think we were.
Mr. President?
Uh, I'm sorry, who's speaking?
Uh, this is Manager Cook. Could, could I, could, could we impose on Administrator Jeffrey or, or, uh, or administrative assistant to, uh, you can just type up in a Word document so we can blow it up and see it, uh, if, if, if Manager Crafton has something to add to soil health, get it done with and, um, and if, uh, you could just copy my proposed change to the, uh, ac- acquisition of properties or rights in those properties, if you could just copy that into a Word document so we can blow it up, we can see uh, what we'd be proposing.
Let's see what here is that. So this was the original thing that, the original resolution is drafted by the. I think that original resolution is drafted by the predecessor that went before. A law in twenty twenty. Um, Manager Crafton reached out to me, um, last year, right before this went and said that. There was some language she would like to see added. Uh, we have not incorporated that language. I'm not sure what that language was. The other factor to think about it, Manager Crafton, you probably know better than I. Bowser has made some adjustments. Um, to, to their rules and their funding to fund. Um, soil health, but those changes are not made directly to one oh three B. They're made to their other programs. Perhaps it is something as simple as. Taking the language that Bowser has already done, it's anyway.
President Ziegler.
Andrew Crafton.
So to Administrator Jeffrey's point. I mean, I know that there's, we just had come before the grant committee. Wanting to, to send more money, but it's. Gonna go to soil and water conservation districts, it sounds like. Which. I've got a whole different context for that talk, but, um. So I would like to review this with Administrator Jeffrey and then. Based on changes that are being made at Bowser, try to figure out what the best way, what's the best to incorporate in this. But hopefully there would be time this next week to, to get that done and get. Submitted or hi, I don't know, but.
Might I recommend, uh, President Ziegler managers? That we remove this resolution. I reach out to, uh, Jan White. At Minnesota Watersheds. Ask her if we were to bring this to the October fourth meeting and give it to around the fifth. If we could get this resolution submitted at that time. And then we would work on the other three resolutions right now, the two that are already finished. And will be one regarding, uh, land acquisition as Manager Cook, if it's spoken.
Mister President.
Manager Cook.
I, I have a slightly different approach, uh. Uh, I suggest that we consider a continuance of this meeting until sometime next week. Giving Manager Crafton the opportunity to propose the changes that she wants to make to this. To the particular resolution on soil health. And that also then will give us time, um. Uh, you know, I, anybody else can, uh. You know, address an alternative language for the. Having to do with the properties, um, and then we could discuss those at that time. I didn't, I don't think that would take. That long, but we could get it done. And I, I always think that if we could get it done before the first and help Minnesota waters out, we would. It, it would be in our best interest, so. So what I'll do is I'll move that we lay these two items over. For a continuance, and I'm going to throw out. Um, Wednesday, September twenty seventh. At seven P M.
If you can give us a minute to check our calendars.
Oh, yeah, you're in charge, Mister President, so you let me know.
Okay. Can you repeat the date?
Yes, uh, September twenty seventh. Thinking at. Seven P M.
That works for me. Does that work for everyone else?
I will be at the Minnesota Watersheds S W C D joint meeting, but I don't think there are any evening obligations for that. So I think I should be able to attend from Alexandria.
Uh, Mister President.
Manager Cook.
Uh, uh, Administrator Jeffrey, I mean, there's. I, I don't, I don't necessarily want to shorten up, but I mean, we can do Tuesday, we can make it Thursday. What is there, at some time that's best for you?
President Ziegler, Manager Cook, that, thank you. I appreciate that consideration. I, I'm probably gonna be bored in my hotel room anyways, so it might be a nice. Exchange, so Wednes- Wednesday, I think will be just fine.
Manager Crafton, does that work for you?
Um, yeah, when is the walk, the tour?
Thursday, Thursday.
All right, I've got an obligation at five thirty that day, um. All right, I, and I'm confused about which two we're talking about.
Uh, Mister President.
Manager Cook.
I was proposing changes to the soil health resolution. And also at that time, be able to have one or more alternatives regarding. Uh, funding of, of some type of. Either acquisition or easement pertaining to the properties that we're going to discuss yet tonight.
So I guess I'm thinking that it'll be quick. Um, we'll have. The two resolutions to look at. Uh, with the proposed changes. To, uh, each of them separately. And we'll have that before the meeting. So it should be pretty quick.
President Ziegler.
Yes, Manager Crafton.
So I'm fine with the original amendment or resolution that was in place about the conservation. Funding, so. I guess I'd like to know where everybody else is on that, whether there's really a need to go forward or not.
So I guess from my perspective, um. I don't see any reason not to tweak it a little bit. Um. With regards to both of the resolutions to. Kind of customize them a little bit and, um, make sure they. Meet what we're looking for, um. And, you know, obviously we may not get exactly what we asked for anyway. Um. So it's just a request from. Or for, uh, Minnesota Watersheds to support. So. You know, it can be fairly general in that respect. But more specific, I think, helps, helps the, uh, Minnesota Watersheds understand it better. Manager Crafton, did you have any further questions?
No, I already stated my point, so.
Okay. Uh, Manager Patterson. Are you available at that time?
Uh, yeah, I'll make sure that I am.
Manager Duval. Are you available?
This is Wednesday, the twenty seventh at seven. Is that correct? Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Okay. So Manager Cook had made a motion to, uh. Delay the two resolutions. And, uh, continue them. Um. To a meeting that would be Wednesday, uh, September twenty seventh at seven P M. So if we make this motion, we're not closing our current meeting, are we?
Mister President.
Manager Cook.
Uh, that was not my intent. It's just these two items would be carried over, so. Manager Craft could make whatever changes she wants to propose with respect to soil health one. And I will make some, uh, come up with an iteration of the. Uh, motion regarding, uh, requesting support for funding. Uh, acquisition or otherwise of the. Like property we're gonna be discussing tonight.
Okay, so I'll second the motion. Um, do we have any, uh, questions or discussions on the motion to? Uh, delay, uh, these decisions to a continued meeting. On Wednesday, the twenty seventh at seven o'clock. Hearing no further questions, Mister Smith, can we have a roll call be, vote on, uh?
Andrew. On the motion to continue for these two resolutions, Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Yes.
Manager Patterson?
Yes.
President Ziegler?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, thank you. Um, so that, um, brings us to the, uh. Member reports. Um, and I believe that, uh, Manager Cook had stated. Um, that he had some information for the member reports.
Uh, yes, Mister President, I assume. Think you wanna go over on the, uh, member report, so just. Give me one minute here.
Sorry, I can't find my mute.
This is your managers. There you go.
Okay, I'm. I'm, I'm ready to go, um.
Manager Cook?
Yes, okay, thank you, um. You know, I, I would review, uh. Where our first concern is, yeah, I had a occasion to review one oh three D, three forty one regarding rules. Um. I'm, I'm concerned that we are not following the notice. This and, uh, in hearing requirements for rules, and this is gonna pertain particularly. Um. To, uh, having to do with permitting. And, you know, in my view, and, and I'm sure Mister Smith takes a different view. But I don't believe that we're following the, the law regarding adopting rules as they're pertaining to the permits. In particular, the fact that the, uh, resolutions about delegating authority. Um, would be a rule, it would pertain to permits. I don't have any evidence of any notice or hearing to be held on that, so. I believe that, uh, delegation of authority, uh, is basically ineffective. So that's my comment number, number one of my report. Uh, number two, regarding the open meeting law, um. I know that at least, uh, at least the Governance Committee, uh, at least noted on its, uh. On the website, that, the document that supposedly they were reviewing. But I also, but I also note that the other committees. Uh, have not, to my knowledge, been posting or making documentation, their review or discuss available to the public. That, um, as I interpret the open meeting law. As it would be applicable to open me, uh, to, uh. Zoom type meetings, so, uh, I urge. The committees and council to work on. Coming up with processes and procedures that do not violate the open meeting law. Um, with respect to I T, I, everybody's probably seen the discussion about A I. Uh, I think it's, uh, prudent. For this district to, uh, look into developing a. Policy and procedure regarding the use of A I. Um. I know it's, it's all the rage, but on a legal, in the legal corners, uh, it is a big deal. Um, and I think we should be having a discussion and. Uh, this goes back to what I've said before, believe we need an I T consultant. I know this has been, uh. I guess nobody else is wanting to do it, but you know, a- as I've said before. None of the managers nor none of the staff, to my knowledge, have sufficient adequate. Information, resources, knowledge, training, experience to adequately advise us. On our I T programs, and I think that's particularly applicable now, uh, when we're dealing with, uh, with A I. Yeah, and, uh, I'll just note that one of the, uh. The policy proposals that a number of people have been tossing about is at a minimum. Adding a policy, is anything's generated by A I be so noted in the document, et cetera, so people. Understand that it is, you know, A I, and they can. Therefore decide what the value they want to put into any documentation compared with A I. Um. The, the next thing I mentioned also having to do with, uh, you know, I T, uh. I don't recall ever having received a briefing regarding our I T security despite the fact that is something that's. Uh, I believe is specified in state law and. And also there's a special provision regarding doing so in full session under the open meeting law, so. I'm of the opinion that we need to, uh, at least have a discussion as to what extent of our security. Uh, systems are having to do with our, uh, I T. Uh, systems. Right now, my list here. And, and I just wanna be clear, I'm not saying that we necessarily have to have. Uh, somebody like imagine I T doing certain things, but I do think we need somebody versed. In issues pertaining to I T, particularly I T security and A I, and advising us. Um, and as I said, uh, most of the discussions, uh, discussion boards, so from a legal perspective, you know, recommends. Hitting that with policies having to do with the use of A I. Uh, next item that I, I will mention, and, and I'll print out this and submit it for inclusion in our, our minutes, but. Our website is in dire need of work. If you go into it. Uh, maybe people who created it know where to look, but I think anybody else on the outside going would be hard pressed to find documentation. Think it'd be hard to press the climate documentation actually. That the Bowser rules actually specify that we make available on the website, and so. I think an I T consultant would also be of assistance in making sure that. Uh, our website is at least compliant with the Bowser rules and hopefully more robust. There's a lack of, uh. Uh, interplay and connections in their website. It's like, uh, you can get lost, you can't find certain things without doing searches, and the searches aren't very helpful. Again, like I said, if you know where to look, you know where to look. You know, websites are not designed for the people who already know the stuff. It's designed for people who find information who don't know that information. Uh, I've said this before, I believe we need an H R consultant. Uh, at a minimum to review, uh, our policies and procedures and make recommendations. As a light of recent legislation and court rulings, as I'm sure. Well, as some of you probably know, there were significant changes with regard to. Uh, human resources and employment law, and those need to be considered and make sure that we're compliant with those, and I'm not. Confident that we are or will be, uh, compliant with those. Having to do with H R, I've already mentioned. Uh, the issue of wages, and I've seen the discussion in the accounting and finance. And, uh, I have concern that, uh, the published guidance by. On the I R S website is not being, uh, followed, um. We also bring to attention, we have federal minimum wage laws that I do not believe that we are complying with. Uh, as I believe managers are employees, um, absent some. Somebody can show me some ruling that's saying we're not, uh, employees. And also, I think there's issued regard to either wage theft law or the payment of contractors. Uh, both require pay, uh, wage theft requires payment every thirty days. Contractors are required to be paid every forty five days, if my recollection is correct. I believe we need to look into that and make sure that we're compliant. Uh, with those applicable laws. Um. With the, uh, it's the Data Practices Act, I've made a number of. Uh, requests for information and either have not. Uh, requests for information and either have not received them or have received them only after a. What I believe is too long a period of time which to respond. Uh, and without, you know, an update as to the status of the request uh in the meantime, and uh. Uh, that's that's to the point where um. Uh, I think we need to do something about it, uh, either by changing the person in charge. Of the Data Practices Act or making sure that such person complies with the with the law. I have comments about our acquisition, but I'll hold those for that close session. Already mentioned about the. Also reported is my my concern is is we we did not have any of the auditors available to discuss the audit. And I am concerned, we're going already going to end up going into. Uh, agreeing to hire some auditors, I think we need to seriously look at other auditors because if. They can't muster having one person being available to answer our questions, uh, then I think we need to have other other auditors. And further, more I pointed out before, I do not believe uh that the auditors are following. The requirements of the state auditor in particular, they're not uh acquiring information uh under the uh. The the legal checklist, at least I certainly didn't get any inquiry as to whether or not I flat. We had any compliance issues. So I think auditing is an issue we need to uh. We we need to deal with. At related to the budget and the audit, you know, and having to go through these documents. Uh, I've come away with the conclusion that I believe. Uh, one oh three B having to do with levies and budgets is. Is not being compliant with, and I encourage the Accounting and Finance. Committee as well as Legal Council to review one oh three K F point two four one. And the processes and procedures set forth there are uh particularly the requirement for a separate fund and the limitation. Uh, expenditures under that to preparing plans and for projects. Because they set the requirement for a separate fund and account. I believe we're failing to follow that that rule. And then with that, I will stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, do any other managers have manager reports? So I I have one, I think this maybe leads into the administrator report, but I understand we're. Uh, scheduled to have uh equipment and furniture for hybrid meetings. Um, that should be available for our October fourth meeting. Is that correct, Administrator Jeffrey?
President Sigler, managers, thanks for the tea up. Um, yes, so the interactive technology has been installed. Um, we are going to, as a staff, do a trial run of it this Monday with people in different remote locations to make certain that it. Is working relatively bug free. I'm sure there will be some hiccups along the way as we learn the system, but it is ready to go. The um board table setup is to be delivered the morning of October fourth, which is the morning of the meeting, so. Assuming there is not a delay, we will also have the tables in place at that time. The system has. Two uh one hundred and eighty degree cameras, one that will face uh the lectern and the audience, and one that will face the board of managers and staff. There is remote control so that um that we can zoom or change frames. Um, one. Uh, beyond that, so we'll have to have a dedicated staff um to function that, and that will. In all likelihood, be Mr. Monahan, Ms. Bacham initially until everybody's up to speed, and then. Uh, we'll be transferring those duties over to it. So. Um, yeah, the short answer is we are ready to go October fourth with our next meeting uh in person or a hybrid. Uh, as managers see fit. And that's all I have for an administrator. Well, I will be at the Minnesota Watershed. Uh, slash S W C B conference uh next week. Uh, it's also the Nawa. Um, annual meeting. Um, I am finishing up the statewide organization survey write-up. And that will be presented to the administrators at that meeting and to the um all of the board members. Um, in November at the annual conference.
Mr. President?
Manager Cook?
You know, I would like to recommend that uh if, you know, the equipment desk or whatever is only going to be delivered as. On the day of the proposed meeting, that that we hold the October meeting via Zoom. And that we set up a a a time for or or times. When we managers can come in and look at the proposed uh setup that Administrator Jeffrey has come up with so that we can. Um. Uh, appreciate his design, et cetera, and perhaps make uh suggestions, and I raise that because. Uh, although it hasn't hit the uh the top of the news yet, as we, I think most of you know, there is a new. Uh, uh, variant of COVID. Uh, we don't know too much about it right now, but it could well be. Uh, similar, I know that uh we're already gearing up for at-home testing. Uh, more masks, and I realize there is some debate about effectiveness of maps, max. Excuse me, my pronunciation, so uh perhaps in the meantime, I would I would recommend we. Continue with Zoom for this next meeting, come in and take a look at the setup being proposed, and then. Uh, and and look for November as being our first uh. I guess, in-person uh meeting. If the if delivery is obviously was beyond Mr. Jeffrey's or Administrator Jeffrey's control.
I would uh ask, why can't we do the mid-October meeting hybrid? I I agree with your. Information on COVID. Um, there's a new uh vaccine too that's. Supposed to be available, but I understand that there's been some people that find out. Well, it's not available where they wanted to get it, so. And also, they're saying that COVID is still in the top five deaths in the U S are being. Uh, associated with COVID. But um, yeah, I I think we need to get to hybrid. Um, and that doesn't mean everybody needs to be there. But um. Yeah, we need to be able to do it hybrid. Uh, Manager Cook?
I I agree with you. I think that the. If we're going to have the first in-person one or hybrid one, their second meeting of the month would make sense to do that at that time. Make sure that the equipment gets delivered and installed and set up.
Okay, does any other, do any other managers have comments about the hybrid um setup? And starting the second meeting in October? Hearing none, the next item on the agenda is Legal Counsel Report. Mr. Smith?
Mr. President, uh, I will. I yield to Manager Crafton.
Thank you. Um, I was muted and I was trying to say something, so sorry. Um. I'm in favor of doing the October fourth one in person and hybrid, so. Anybody? But I'm eager to get going. If we want to do it, I'd like to get do the do the October fourth one in person. I don't know where everybody else is.
Manager Pedersen?
Uh, I know how these tech installs go, and if one thing goes wrong. It's not gonna, it won't happen the right way. I think it's probably better to wait until our second meeting of the month, just because. Just getting all the kinks out of the system and everybody knows how to run everything. It'll take a little bit of time, just to make it run smoother. I I think I'd probably wait until middle of the month. I real, I think it's probably better.
Thank you. Manager Duval?
I'm just wondering if if uh if possible to. It's it's going to take a little testing to run to work out the kinks, as everybody's saying. Then maybe we maybe we start with the uh. With the committee meetings, again, it might it might take two or three meetings before it actually works like we think it's going to work. And then, secondly, uh, I got the first new. Vaccine for the new COVID thing on Monday. And it was it was the first one, first grouping of people to get it at a Walgreens, and on Tuesday. So. Anyway, just a a statement, I guess, but it seems like. Wait until the equipment is there, number one, and number two. Just be aware that no matter how much prep we do or how much we delay it, it's gonna, there's probably going to be some kinks in it, so. We should just start it when we can, when everything is there and and just expect that we're going to have some hiccups.
President Sigler?
Man, Administrator Jeffrey?
Yeah, um, I agree with the take because I admit there is a part of me that is nervous about having the very first meeting and then. Being embarrassed the whole time as as there are glitches. Um, but I do like Manager Duval's idea of utilizing the committees as. I'll say guinea pig for last better word, but a living laboratory, um. Because there typically aren't uh the same public um participation in those meetings, so hopefully we won't. Displace people that would otherwise be trying to get in if we have those glitches.
Thank you. So I think you know how to proceed at this point. Uh, Mr. Smith, you have uh the uh Legal Counsel Report?
Mr. President, managers, I have one matter to report on to you uh that will be appropriate for closed session, and so when we. Get to the point of going back to closed session on the Spring Road properties. Uh, and for that motion, I'll add a second item that time.
Okay, thank you. So the uh other thing on the agenda is upcoming topics and then upcoming events. Uh, Administrator Jeffrey, is there anything we need to talk about on these?
Um, just that our our Creek Week is coming up, and that's all of those events you see, the Soil Health Workshop, Ball Tour, Bill Lorraine Merrill. Uh, culminates the Grebel Bed Giveaway. Um, we'll have a cycle of the creek. Uh, and then there's uh Nine Mile Creek, and I believe it is uh Minnetoka. Um, it's during the Soil Health Walkshop, we're participating in that upcoming board tops. Topics should also include the Governance Manual um updates, but that will likely not be until December. And that will have the uh Audit and Finance will have that portion of the Governance Manual updated, so. Um, that's really it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments before we go into closed session? I guess we need a motion and a second on that.
I'll move we go into closed session.
A second.
Here we have a motion.
Yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Smith. I was just going to say the properties.
Okay, um, my recommendation would be that we go into closed session for discussing two items of district business. The first be uh a lawsuit filed by Spring Valley Friends against the district and Rachel Contracting. Uh, for the purpose of giving the district confidential legal advice uh about that litigation matter. And then the second. Uh, uh, purpose for the discussion would be to discuss the potential. Acquisition of the property located at ninety nine fifty five and nine eight seven five Spring Road in Eden Prairie. And a third parcel adjoining it with identified as P I D two eight one one six two two three two zero 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 five.
So I I think we had somebody that was going to make that motion.
We have.
Me too.
Okay. Any questions or comments before we vote? Hearing none, can we have a roll call vote, Mr. Smith?
Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Yes.
Andrew Pedersen?
Yes.
President Siegler?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Administrator Jeffrey, can you let me know when everyone's back in, if there is anyone?
Certainly, they're joining right now.
Okay, thank you.
Since Herbert is in here, then we will have everyone. There it is. We have everyone.
Okay, so I'll entertain a, well, do we have to give any kind of summary at this point? Saying no, then uh I'll entertain a motion to uh continue this meeting. Um. I forgot the date, but uh maybe somebody.
Twenty seventh.
Wednesday, the twenty seventh at seven? So I'll make the motion to continue this meeting to Wednesday, the twenty seventh at seven o'clock. Do I have a second?
All second.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, can we have a roll call vote, please, Mr. Smith?
Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval?
Yeah.
And Siegler?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
I'd like to thank everybody for their time tonight, and uh hopefully it was well spent.
Thanks, Alex. Michael's left already, I believe.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks, Alex, very much.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks, all.
Thanks, everyone. Take care.
Night.
Night.